This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All the order, the zoning board of appeals of the city of East Hampton, today is Wednesday, August 24th. This is a hybrid meeting in that you can join via Google Meet or in person. We are in person at the town hall. Run over some administrative items first. We have correspondence and requests for comments from other boards, committees, or officials. Eli, is there any correspondence from other boards?
Uh, no.
Okay. In public speak time, is there anyone here this evening or online interested to speak to the board regarding any item that is not on the current agenda for this evening? And with that, we will review the minutes for the January 26, 2022 meeting. They were presented to the board. All members of the board are present or in attendance. Is there any meeting notes or comments that need to be reviewed by anyone? Okay, the only thing I do see is in the printed version, it does say page one of three, two of three, and there's only two pages.
Yeah, that is a last page. I'm not gonna know that.
Okay, I just, for legal purposes, those are the things that kind of, you know, to catch, you're like, hey, we can just change that.
Alright.
So with that said, the motions were approved.
Motion approved.
Okay, Tony makes a motion to approve.
My second.
Second by Steve. All in, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Kyle's with the low. You were present for the meeting, uh, were you not?
Yes, I just know it's associated with that.
That's okay. Yeah, you were, you were here. So, you're good. And Lisa was here, so go ahead, we're good. Alright, so with that, we will go ahead and move forward with our applicant. With two, two meetings, there are two agenda items for this evening. Their preference on which one goes first?
Both of them.
Okay. Is there someone here, I know we have, we have what I consider a very quick item. Is there a representative from Matthew Gall present? Okay, there we go. Okay.
Matt, would you mind standing by that door that you're presenting or speaking? Just to be in the, in the shadow of the camera?
Sure.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Do you want to do that right now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, thank you. And you can place the board too, so have all space.
Okay, there we go. Alright, uh, so Matthew Gall is seeking to renew an expired variance for the side yard setbacks for non-residential structure in accordance with section 13.1 of the East Hampton zoning ordinance. Subject property is located at 118 Union Street, parcel ID 53-22, and zone downtown business. If I recall correctly, this was a variance that was issued by this board previously, and for some reason it expired, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and is there any changes that you're looking to make beyond what was originally asked for in that original variance? No changes, no changes at all, at all. Okay. So is there any question from the board regarding the original decision that was made by this board on Wednesday? Oh, that's today. When was that original decision made? Sorry.
That's right, that's the draft of a decision for today.
Okay, so is there, is there any?
The original decision was from 2020.
From 20?
2020, February 2020.
February 2020. Is there any questions, you know, concerns about the variance that was originally issued? Okay, so with that said, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant a special permit for Matthew Gall, 118 Union Street.
Okay, with the conditions of the original.
Yeah. Okay. Well, there's not much change for the grievance.
Okay.
Don't say that.
Alright, is there any further discussion or concern from any other members of the public or the board? Okay, so with that said, can we get a motion? Can I get a, you have a motion made second? All in favor? Okay, so we have unanimous verdict to go ahead and review the variance for Matthew Gall with the property of 118 Union Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt. Alright, so with that said, we are now going to open the hearing for Ken Shapiro. Okay, Ken Shapiro is seeking a special permit and variance to modify an existing pre-existing non-conforming commercial structure, both front and rear setbacks in accordance with section 11.13 and 13.1 of the East Hampton zoning ordinance. The subject property is located at 150 North Hampton Street, parcel ID is 128-100, and the property is zone highway business. Mr. Shapiro, can you or someone on your, that you'd like to represent you? Explain what you'd like to do.
Should I, or should I?
Why don't I start?
No.
I can defer to that for anything I don't know. Alright, and if there was an attendance, if you could explain?
Absolutely. So my name is Jeff Wire, I'm with the Berkshire Design Group, uh, here on behalf of Ken and Rob and Shapiro for the redevelopment of 150 North Hampton Street. As you said, this is for parcel 128-100. It's a pre-existing non-conforming site in that it currently exceeds, actually, easier to do, is probably do a few feeds and a special revision, just highlighted version of what you already have. Currently, it is the, what was previously the national carpet or flooring business, which is highlighted on the area. I just thought it was helpful. Oops. It's part of our reference. And the property extent is highlighted in, in yellow. And so it currently exceeds the front setback, which I think is currently, you know, if my, if my number is correct here. And I just want to make sure. So, um, the, uh, the existing setback and the minimum requirement for the front set, front yard is 30 feet, it's currently at 18 and a half feet. The rear setback and that back corner, you can see, uh, the requirement is also 30 feet, we're currently, currently just over 16 feet. And so the proposal is to modify and redevelop the site, which includes two small additions, as you can see on the second page, second plan sheet, which extend that front, um, front elevation to fill in that piece of the building, and then the rear portion of the building to fill in that space, both of which, or neither of which extend beyond what the current setbacks of those two locations are. So currently, like, front portion of the building will exceed 18 and a half feet, the back addition does not exceed existing setback at 16, if it was 16 feet. There are other revisions and modifications that are proposed on the, as, as part of the project, so a lot of that impervious area, that existing parking lot area will go away in an attempt to reorganize and, and, you know, make that parking lot delineation a little more clear. A lot of the space behind the building is proposed to be renovated to garden space. And so just that's all the parts of the project, doesn't necessarily impact your review. As far as I understand, it's primarily for the extension and the additions of the existing non-conforming, which is the front rear setback pieces of the, of the property. We are going to planning board, we are going to D O T for a modification to one of the curb cut locations, various maybe large, but otherwise, that's just general information for the project that is first out.
Okay. So if, for the board's understanding, we, for residential purposes, if this was a residential property, for those new members, they would not be here this evening. Because what they are, what they are asking to do is modify a, was considered a non-conforming structure in that it's, it's too close to the side yard or rear yard setbacks or front setbacks, and they're looking to modify it, but not making any more non-conforming. So if they wanted to, if they wanted to get closer than the current with 18 and a half feet or 16.3 feet, 16 feet, three inches, that is non-conforming, they would then be, you know, have to come in front of us as a residential property. But as a, because it's commercial, the zoning bylaws state that they must come to us. So that is just, I'll be just informational more than, just because I know you got many new members and I want to make sure everybody kind of understands all that. So I know that in the past, we've had some questions concerning parking and things like that. We've brought down all kinds of radicals. That is not why you're here, you're simply here because of the non-conforming nature of the building and the fact that you would like to extend it. Correct? Okay. Eli, if you could just pass me the book in front of you. Because they're looking for both a variance and a special permit, we have to issue them in order. It's just so, there again, so members of the board understand that. So the variant, the special permit, which is 11.13, must get you first, and then, then the variance can be issued. They have different requirements of each, so I just want to make sure we understand what those requirements.
Sean, I think you got that backwards. The variance needs to be issued first.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So the special permit granted, the ZBA finds that, uh, one, for alteration, complies with the variance, it doesn't, or does, but, um, two, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing. I'm pretty sure that the variance needs to come first.
Okay. I'm sorry, guys. Special permits come first from both, that's why I'm sure they were not first. So, but I just want to view everything so everyone understands what's going on, and then we will open it up to the public and everything like that. So for, for reasons of discussion, let's just move away. For a pre-existing non-conforming non-residential structure, section 11.13, a pre-existing non-conforming non-residential structure may not be expanded, altered, and/or changed except by special permit from the ZBA. That is, special permit would be granted if the ZBA finds, A, that the proposed alteration, extension, or changes complies with the zoning ordinance standards, or has received a variance, which is why they're also here, for such proposed alterations, extensions, changes, ZBA, and that the proposed alteration, extension, or change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. So that is for that section. And then for the variance. So there are four findings we need to find for, to issue a variance. To give a variance, after giving public notice and holding a public hearing, the Board of Appeals may grant a variance, the following findings must be made by the Board of Appeals before variance may be issued. The variance must be with respect to a particular parcel of land or to an existing building on that land. Just meet that requirement. There must be circumstances related to soil conditions, shape, or topography, especially affecting such land or structure, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. Next one is literal enforcement of the ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or applicant. And desirable relief may be granted if there will not be substantial detriment to public good or nullification, or substantial derogation from the intent and purpose of this ordinance. So those are the things we need to find. That said, can you justify, I'd like to hear how you're going to justify the findings to issue variance?
I understood that this was a variance request other than an extension of an existing non-conforming structure. So I don't, I guess that's the, that's the zoning, or, you know, legal clarification for you. I, I've never understood that to be a new variance request, that it's existing, you know, the extension of existing non-conforming. I'm not sure where the, the variance already exists. And so, so to the extent that, you know, there's an existing building that is currently non-conforming. So at some point, you know, prior to the current zoning regulations or international standards, or even whether there was a variance issued, they got a building constructed. And so the, you know, the way we have always interpreted it, and as, as we've gone through other towns, is that it's an extension of the existing non-conformity. It's not necessarily a new variance request. So I guess that's, I, yeah.
Let's, let's defer to Jeff.
Yeah, Jeff, I'm a City Mayor, and Eli and I, you know, have looked at this and prepared the memo that the board has. It's somewhere in the, it's somewhere in the middle of what you guys just both said. So I think the way that we broke it down was that you have a non-conforming structure, and that 11.13, that A, says that to alter it, you need a special permit. So that's what a homeowner doesn't have to do, that a residential structure, you don't need a special permit just to alter it, but you do for a non-residential, so that's why, it's the first thing that brings to here. And then that part B says that a special permit can be granted if, it would just be a special permit if they can meet the 30-foot setbacks. And then it says, or has received a variance for such proposed alteration. So you, we, we interpreted it that you need the variance to continue that non-conforming setback, which is what's proposed. So this is much like what happened with the Union Street project just before.
Correct.
We already had all those elaborate discussions, you just renewed it, but the very scurry building was, didn't meet the setbacks, and it was a special permit, you know, variance to rebuild in that footprint, to keep that work. So like the four criteria under the variance, Eli had proposed a couple ways to think about that. I don't know if you want, Eli, to talk about that or not, but, you know, he said it's like an existing structure, so I kind of got that. The shape of the property is the issue in the back mainly, that abnormal shape. And then, uh, the literal enforcement section is that the building's been there for a very long time, and it just happens to be that close to Central Avenue Street. So the literal enforcement of anything having to be 30 feet, you know, like the outlook, it's a hardship. And then the detriment is that the building's been there, it's kind of a modest improvement, modest addition to the front, the back. So those were in the middle, that's just kind of summarizing it.
Okay. I'm certainly satisfied that no more detrimental, yeah, I think, neighborhood. Okay, uh, so, thank you, Jeff. Do you have anything you would like to add, sir?
No.
Put your hand here, you're trusting Jeff. Alright, is there any other member of the public who is interested to speak concerning this application?
I have something very brief to say.
Of course.
I'm Gwen Morrissey, I'm the Chair of the Economic Development and Industrial Commission, and largely, I'm just here to say, anything that we can do to support new businesses coming into town, whatever we need to do to those buildings to make sure that they can sustain themselves and thrive in East Hampton is a good thing, and EDIC is on board. So I will be attending any other meeting related to this endeavor, so that's why I'm here. You just happen to be first. I, I don't think that there's a ton of convincing that needs to be done. Usually, these are not wildly insane suggestions for variances, special permits. So I'm, I'm very much in favor, as is the rest of the EDIC. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, at this point, we will close the public hearing. And if there are any questions that the board may have for the applicant?
Yes, was I a question about the elevation? That east elevation is the one facing the street, correct?
Um, the, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
It almost feels like that looks in the back of the building. Is there some rhyme or reason?
Sure, I'm trying to make sure that.
Almost, I kept trying to think it was a different.
This is the elevation, so I immediately said north elevation. Okay, because that's where those two service entrances are on this, on this side of the building right now. This is the elevation, so. Okay. Yes. Directions.
Yeah, I thought it'd be odd to have, yeah, in that with the, well, it looks like the back of the building facing the street.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's some existing garage entrance on that elevation now, which that's, that's what those are. Yeah, okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Can we just get a quick overview of what type of businesses it's calling?
This is, yes.
I guess that's, that's for you. So it's having opened in 1981 in North Hampton. We offer hot tubs, indoors, outdoors, massages, aesthetic treatments. We've served over 1.25 million people. It's a lifetime. We had a fire last June, and that got us out of business. It wasn't anything that was our fault. It was a relatively brand-new gas pool heater, it was six months old. It replaced a unit exactly the same that had been there for 15 years. One afternoon, it decided to say no, and we lost all of our rooftops. So those were the ones that made the most money for us. We were doing about 70% of our volume of our, of our sales in the three outdoor tubs. This location has 5,000 square feet of rooftop. You should be able to put, minimum, eight tubs, so where we had three, out of eight. We're going to have indoor massages and treatments. We'll think about what we're going to do about indoor tugging for the time being. Basically, you know, we never had a health department complaint, we never had anybody's complaint. We were just, it's good smacks. It's really fun. We have like a snack area or a little restaurant or something like that. I think that we will consider that for a later time, not really asking for licensing for that right now. We may, you know, we did sell prepackaged drinks, and we didn't, we weren't making our own juices or any of that. We have considered, perhaps, a new one, or some, some type of light fair might be something that we'd consider, but for the time being, kind of want to get back into businesses, renting hot tubs to people and giving massages. It's just a wonderful way to spend some time. Would you consider having gangbooks? No, but we have talked about having, one of my friends is a medical, well, he's a doctor in the Berkshires, he puts on conferences. So they're small, and we have a lobby area that would be separate from our entry lobby. Actually, we have three or four root areas. And we would consider, and he said he would like to go to some of the doctors' conferences and then book our service, which sounds great. The backyard is a place where we hope to build out a garden, stone patios or what have you. And perhaps, in the spring, summer, fall, we could do bridal showers, wedding showers at that time. I think, but I don't see us as really going to this sort of conference. And we all lend ourselves well-toothed services. It's mostly parties of tuning sometimes. Thank you very much. For sure. I would forward to serving this community.
Okay, anyone else have any questions? Okay, so at this point, we'll close here. Do you have a copy of that memo? Just because I've read it and. So. I guess, you know, it says that the proposed, a special permit will be granted, I guess, as you said, they have received a variance for such proposed alteration. So, enter the variance first, and then we will look at doing the special permit.
Yep. And you have the variance findings?
I have, I have those too. So, look, uh, the variance must be in relationship to a particular piece of property and its particular building, which it is. There are circumstances related to soil conditions, shape, or topography, especially affecting such land or structure, which there is. And the fact that it's high-risk business is part of that. Literal enforcement of the ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial, otherwise petitioner, existing, the location of the existing building, a relative to the start Hampton Street right away, predates the current zone. So it's, it was there prior to zoning, kind of sets the precedent that that is the setback. Desirable relief may be granted, there will be no substantial detriment to the public good or nullification, or substantial derogation from the intent or the purpose of the ordinance. It's not going to be any more non-conforming. Anybody have any thoughts, comments? Lisa? Just want to make sure you're included in there.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that said, can I get a motion to approve a variance for the property located at, I have my notes here, uh, 115 North Hampton Street, uh, in the city of East Hampton? Make a motion to approve a variance for East Hampton, 115 North Hampton Street. Okay, can I get a second?
I second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Make sure you count their votes. All those count. Okay, so with that, the variance does pass. For legal reasons, the variance does have a 20-day, or we have, we have a period to write the variance, and then we have to sign it, it then gets sent to the town clerk, it gets state stamped, there's then a 20-day appeal period. If anyone finds that they don't approve of the variance that we've issued, they may appeal it, at which point you will then be notified. You can then go to the town hall, pick up the approved variance, and you then have to go to the registry deeds in North Hampton and say, I'm allowed to do this, and then you can go to the building.
I thought they closed.
On a train station now, near the train station. I'm going to get sent to my, or provisioned.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, glad you know.
It's a huge building that the state gave to the city, and the city, like, two months ago had a hearing, though. What are we going to do with it?
There you go.
I suggested they consider East Hampton Hot Tub. That's what they did, they laughed at me.
Well, guess what? They lose. You're coming here. Alright, so now that we have the variance, can I get a motion to approve a special permit for pre-existing non-conforming non-residential structure based, located at 115 North Hampton Street, the city of East Hampton? I made a motion to approve a special permit for East Hampton Hot Tub, 115 North Hampton Street. Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
We got lots of seconds. Okay, we'll let Lisa get the second. Okay, any further discussion? Questions or concerns? Okay, all in favor? Chop hands. Okay, so passes unanimously. That follows the same thing, where we'll have to write the special permit. Once it's completed and signed, it gets sent to the city clerk, certain works will be notified if you pick it up. Oh, there's 20-day appeal period, I've got a permit too?
Yep.
Okay, that's why it's been a while since we've done this. Since January. So, alright.
Yes, sir. The one process question, if I may, is that in addition to the variance and special permit you just granted, they also do a planning board, and that's when other things about the aesthetics of the building, parking, and use will also be discussed, and they need a special permit from the planning board. a special permit from the planning board. So before they get a building permit, we need to talk to them on the planning board too.
Right, I forgot that little part. Yes, thank you. All right. Congratulations, sir. And wish you luck, and welcome to East Hampton.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, so is there anything else that people can discuss?
I just wanted to, this is our, our crew, y'all, and my wife, Logan, my son, Jesse, my daughter, we are the principals, and we're running the place.
Awesome. Well, we look forward to experience. What's your place of residence, many years?
Enjoyed. So have my daughter, son-in-law, many times. Yeah, it's sort of a way it goes both ways, it's like it's a fun thing to do.
Yes.
I've always said, I can't believe we get to do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next week, thanks.
How's it going on?
I hear you.
No one wants to say for the end of the meeting.
So, for those that are still in attendance, our meetings are typically on the fourth Wednesday of each month, which puts our next meeting on Wednesday, September 28th at 6:00 PM. The submission deadline for applications is Wednesday, September 7th at noon. So if we don't have anything by then, or do we have anything in the works?
Maybe, maybe.
So maybe, it's not sure.
So pencil in the 28th at 6 o'clock, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, pencil, no pen yet. No pen on the 28th.
No pen yet on the 28th. Okay. So is there anything else that anyone needs to discuss pertaining to the board? Okay, with that, can I get a motion for adjournment?
Please, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second, okay, all in favor?
All right.
Come on.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.